Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say present for roll call. Commissioner Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Present.
President McLean-Hill?
Present.
Commissioner McGraw?
Present.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Present.
Five board members, a quorum is present. Madam President.
Terrific, thank you. I actually have the opening remarks today to a productive meeting. So we will start then with general public comment.
Good morning, speakers. I'm sorry. Good morning, speakers. Please be mindful that you will have two minutes to address the board. The first speaker is Marvin Brown, who will be followed by Abby King.
Good morning, Your Honor. I wanted to address you on an issue that is great concern. And I came here about a year ago. And I wanted to assure you that I'm not your enemy. I'm your friend. And the reason I say that is because I heard an executive say, "There are 10,000 beautiful, wonderful people who work for LEDWP. People who are courageous, people who are brave, only want to come here, do their job, and go home." But there's something else going on here. And I've summarized it in this document, which I'll leave here for you, Madam President. I said, when I came here the last time, I said, "I'm not your enemy." I said, "I'm here to protect you." If you read this document, you'll see what I was trying to protect you from. If you don't, all the other commissioners, I'll send you an email copy of this document. And I'll make sure anybody else who needs it or wants to see it can have it. But I want you to know I am an advocate of peace, a man that loves peace, and a man that's just out to try to do good. I know what it's like firsthand to have a job that pays you $200,000 a year and have somebody come up to you and have you do something that's nefarious or unprofessional. That's happened to me, where you have to, where now you have to make a decision between what's ethical, what's right, what's holy, what's godly. You come to that point where you have to make that decision or take that check. Well, what I had to do in my situation is I made this, I, well, I got fired. I'll just tell you. I got fired because I wouldn't do it. I'm sorry for taking so much of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciative.
The next speaker is Abby King.
Hi, good morning. My name is Abby King, and I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. And I'm speaking on item 14. So VICA would like to thank the Commission and the Department of Water and Power for coming up with this creative, outside-the-box-style policy change and encourages a yes vote. For a long time, developers have faced a burden when they are the first one building in an area that requires lengthy power line extensions, picking up 100% of the cost associated with bringing power to their project. This policy change distributes the cost of underground distribution line extensions in public property amongst parcels that would benefit from the same underground distribution line extension, making the process more fair. This will also add much housing stock by removing a financial obstacle and encourages economic development by sharing some of the LEDWP costs required for customer-initiated projects. This change will also bring LEDWP into alignment with other electric utilities throughout the state of California. For these reasons, VICA encourages you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
There were two ecomments received, which were distributed to all commissioners. Public comment is now closed.
Thank you. We'll move on to a report by the General Manager.
Thank you. Board President Marty is on vacation, so I have a few comments that I want to share with the board and the public. First is the news of relaunching the ERSP, which is our procurement electronic portal. You know, the newly redesigned and upgraded online bidding portal. The ERSP went live August 1st. And this was the effort of many organizations and divisions working together. Supply Chain Services and various other divisions worked to successfully launch this system. And now it's available for public to use and do business with LEDWP. I'm going to ask Anselmo to do the water. But before that, a couple of the initiatives that I want to report on, some organizational assignments that you've seen the bulletins on, but I just want to highlight the purpose behind realignments of these groups. The first one is the appointment of Basalma Wachakra as the Chief Compliance Officer, reporting directly to me. The purpose of this realignment is to make sure that we have a LEDWP-wide compliance view of all the issues that we have to deal with, anywhere from the compliance buckets that we are familiar with, with the federal regulations, the NERC and the FERC, on the power side, the water quality and the compliance that we have to do on the water side, and then everything in between, that we must have a good view of our compliance obligations and not only meet those obligations, but also be proactively working to improve the process of how we can make those better. So I want to welcome Basal to the organization and congratulation on his appointment. The other appointment, the change that was made is the alignment of the Fleet Services back, reporting to me on the Joint System. John Smith, the Director of Fleet Services, will be reporting directly to me. Him and his staff are working diligently to prepare a fleet-integrated resource plan to make sure that they have alignment between the fleet organization, the transition that they're going through to reduce their carbon footprint, the procurement process that they're going through, and also aligning their organization to make sure they better serve the operating divisions, the water and power, and the support functions in the organization. So again, John Smith is a very capable director. He's going to do a great job in aligning us with this mission. The last appointment is appointment of John Vanacor as the manager in charge of preparing for a new division that was going to be created. It's called the Advanced Technologies Infrastructure. And the reason why this division has been created is to bridge the gap between the technology and the advancements that we have to take steps to implement and the actual building of these systems. So John Vanacor is very experienced. He was the Executive Director of the Joint Safety and Training Institutes. He brings a lot of knowledge on the technology side and on the field side. John is working diligently to bring you the details on the advanced metering infrastructure deployment, where we are with that, and some very clear guidelines on when we're going to be implementing that technology for the customers to have information that they could use when it comes to electric and water usage and other technologies that we're going to be deploying. So three managers that are moved over to the, appointed and moved over to the Joint System that are basically completing the strategies that we've talked about, and then more details to come on these three areas. Couple other just topics that I want to introduce, and then I'll turn it over to Anselmo for the water briefing. One is the concept of the customer service that we have, both water and power customer service, and how we present our support for the residential, the commercial, and the development communities, and how we serve the city. The concept of LA Connect has been discussed internally. We're at the beginning of the discussions of creating the vision of how we can take our processes, streamline them, and actually create a physical presence and a parallel digital hub for customers to have the connection with LEDWP services and how we can keep them engaged in the products that they are in need of. So anywhere from electric vehicle installations to charging installations to battery, distributed energy, to solar, to water monitoring, leak monitoring, to anything connectivity-related services that we will provide. This center will be located very close to JFB. We haven't finalized the location of the LA Connect Center, but this will bring, under one umbrella, will bring the services that we provide, both on the water and power side, and have a one-stop shop for supporting the customers. The last item I wanted to report on, and we've discussed this, is the preparations that we are working on, on the emergency management procedures and the training and the infrastructure in order for us to prepare. September is the emergency preparedness month, and we have a campaign for educating our employees and the public on preparing for emergencies, anywhere from, you know, major disasters to things that we have to deal with on climate change and other issues that we will be faced. The way the department is going to be organized will be very much streamlined from the top all the way to the operating units, and how we prepare our procedures in order for us to be very effective in activating local emergencies, all the way to raising up to the level of the department, connecting with the city, connecting with the state, connecting with the federal agencies, and actually responding to these emergencies. So staff is working, is going to present to the board the request of unified approach on the emergency preparedness procedures, the training that we're going to go through, and actually, we're going to do a tabletop exercise to make sure everything we put in place are working and it's effective and get your feedback on how we can improve this process moving forward. We are going to get much better in this response to make sure the resources are put in the right places, and we are very quick in responding and overcoming these challenges that we have in front of us. Those are my reports, and I'll turn it over to Anselmo for the water runoff updates.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. Just an update on the runoff. Wanted to let you know that as a result of the effective preparation, the extraordinary work of staff, we've been able to actually get past the peak runoff. And it's been done with minimal damage to the aqueduct system, which I think is quite remarkable based on where we were a few months ago and the fact that we had a record-setting snowpack, almost 300% of normal. The majority of Owens Lake, the work that we were doing to prepare it, to armor it, has been done. As a matter of fact, some of the work that we've done in armoring it will be there permanently as well, because no matter if, no matter when, we're going to have another really heavy runoff season. So a lot of these improvements will stay there permanently. Early water personnel will continue to work actively, because even though we're past the peak, we're still seeing higher flows than normal for this time of the year, but it's nowhere near where we were during peak flow, which happens sometime in early July, when it started warming up quite a bit. I think we benefited from the really cool spring that we had. It helped the water back, allowed us to continue spreading significantly and getting all the facilities ready. We believe that we're going to be actively working and continuing to spread water, manage the excess water, at least till September. So we're not out of the issue yet, but certainly we're in a much better position than we were before. As a matter of fact, you may have seen there was an article published on Sunday in the LA Times talking about the huge collaborative effort between all the parties, the department, Inyo County, Mono County, and all the other agencies up there. And collectively, we're able to successfully manage this record runoff. So I want to thank all of those other agencies as well. Just to give you an idea by the numbers, so during the peak, we had over 200 employees that were working out there on a daily basis. We pretty much had a 24/7 schedule. That's what it took for us to be able to manage the record amount of water. We had over 86 excavators, 54 dump trucks, over 200 metric tons of rocks were installed at Owens Lake. That's a lot of rock that we installed at Owens Lake to armor it in preparation for the high flows and the elevation of the brine pool. We also moved over 300,000 cubic yards of sand from the waterways, and we deployed over 15,000 sandbags. So as you can see, this was quite an effort. We also had around 65 media posts and bulletins that were informing our residents of our operations. We also conducted 33 snow surveys. I think, as I mentioned in previous meetings, we normally do a handful of snow surveys prior to the runoff you're starting. Because of the excessive amount of snow, we had additional snow surveys done to be able to see how we were melting the snow and make sure that we knew when to expect the runoff. So it's quite extraordinary, the effort. We also maintained over 200 miles of canals and waterways, meaning going in there as the water was flowing and taking out all the sediment to make sure there was nothing impeding the water from moving properly and staying within the confines of the waterways themselves. So I want to do thank several groups, and if you would allow me, in the power system, the Joint System, for the great collaboration and support, specifically Fleet, Stores, Safety Group, the Office of Emergency Management, PCM, Corporate Environmental Services, the OS Valley Transmission folks and generation, as well as Corporate Communication. But I also have to thank the folks that are in this room also, from the Chief Operating Officer, General Manager, to this board, and also the mayor. Everybody provided the support that we needed to manage this. And I think we've done a great job in managing it successfully. But if it wasn't for the collective efforts, I don't think we'd have been able to do this. Roadblocks were taken away and eliminated, and everything was streamlined to be able to get and respond as quickly as we did and successfully. On another note, also wanted to let you know that on July 27th of this year, LEDWP customers were notified that they were allowed to start watering once again three days per week. As you know, because of the drought started back in June of last year, we were put on a two-day-a-week watering of Phase 3 of the Water Conservation Ordinance. We have gone back to Phase 2 as a result of the really good water year that we've had. And we want to really thank our customers for the extraordinary efforts they made in conserving water. In this last year, Angelenos saved another 10%. And keep in mind that we already had saved over 20% from the previous drought with very little rebound in demands. And now we've got a national 10%. So in 15 years, 30% reduction in our consumption. So that is a great effort by all Angelenos, and we want to thank him for that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Anselmo. That concludes my remarks also.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions regarding the General Manager's report? I just want, anything over here? No? I just want to also, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, a lot to absorb. Amazing work. I wonder if either of you were sleeping. And so I'm really impressed and hope to be able to read the report so I can really absorb it 100%, but very impressive on both of your parts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I think you should have a big press release congratulating all of us Angelenos who have done our part in our gardens and in the public spaces.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I would like to also offer, at some point in the future, I'd love to have my aqueduct staff be able to come and present on the work that they did. As you said, we probably didn't sleep a whole lot. Those individuals probably didn't sleep at all. And I think it would be great for them to have an opportunity to show you exactly what they did, along with all the other folks that supported them, to be able to make this happen. I'm extremely proud of my aqueduct staff and everybody else that provided support. This is probably one of the best collaborative efforts that I've ever seen in my 32 years working in the department.
All right. Well, thank you. And we will certainly be happy to put a formal report on the board agenda. Would love to hear from the aqueduct staff. I just, a couple of comments. First, very interested and pleased that the department will be conducting tabletop exercises in connection with our emergency management response. And would simply request that you alert the board office as to when that will be occurring. So if Commissioners are interested in observing, that they have the opportunity to do that. And Mr. Collins, your pride and enthusiasm is palpable. And I simply want to say that when we sit at this table and in this room, it often seems very far removed from the work and the impact of that work. But I know and very much appreciate both the efforts of our staff, but also know that this means that it all meant a lot in the real world as it relates to very anxious people who are looking at the potential of real damage and devastation around runoff. And the management of the aqueduct is, you know, it's a pretty incredible feat. These are the kinds of things that we take for granted and shouldn't. And so I just want to add my recognition and to let you and your entire team know that we're all very, very appreciative of what's occurring and what has occurred and really do look forward to a presentation on that.
May I add one small thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Just also appreciative of the tremendous work that they've all done. But I think it should not be lost on anyone that our system is quite possibly the most complicated in the world. And the way that they've been able to manage this and with all the constituents is really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Do we have any future motions to be introduced? I'm not aware of any, so we'll move to comments from the Rapier Advocate. We have a memo in that regard. Are there any additional comments that you'd like to make at this time?
Yes.
Sure.
One, I have a memo that supports the Powerhouse Project and the Rules Amendment, but adds a request for routine reporting, since sometimes some things that seem temporary, like emergency declarations, in this industry can go on decades. An easy example is net energy metering had an interim solution proposed in, I think it was 1996. And 28 years later, we're arguing about whether that needs to be changed or not. So we wanted to record the costs going forward in three levels. One, just to track the information. Two, to make sure that's released to the council as part of the preliminary budget report on DWP. And then finally, a reminder in the final budget, say, "How might we finance this? What are other sources that could help support these costs?" And a word of caution, there's another camel in the room on distribution costs. In the 1,400 pages of FERC materials on interconnections, they said they would consider, in some cases, their authority applying down to the distribution level. So there may be yet another interested party in this process. And that really follows on from a Supreme Court decision written by Ruth Bader Ginsburg in the early 2000s that included a footnote of, "FERC could regulate down to the distribution level, down to the meter level if appropriate." So that's, those are my comments, a summary of my comments on items I to and L14. My other item is some brief comments on the Valley Generating Project, item L12. And I just, I have some remaining questions about all of that. There are five. Why did the demo have to be integrated with the new build? What made that required? Second question, did they consider doing the smokestack removal first and then replacing the offices and then demoing the old office? They appear to have space for that. Is the price per square foot for the new build appropriate for what you would see of a new build of office space at a power plant site, especially one that's secured, so it doesn't really need to be fancy because no one will ever see it other than staff? Is there a more reasonable outcome at the site without the solar canopy for EV charging? Our experience with the costs at the zoo indicate that that's spectacularly expensive. And then, what is the implied cost of carbon for these low-to-no-carbon new buildings? And what's the implied cost of carbon supporting the solar canopies for the EVs?
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Also, I just want to note that we are deferring items L12 and L17 and L5. So with respect to your questions on L12, there will be additional time for those issues to be addressed and brought, responses to those questions to be brought forward. So I appreciate that.
Can I ask, can you send those questions to the board as well as the team?
Okay. So that takes us to items recommended for approval. So as I've indicated, L5, L12, L17 are deferred. L14 is being called special. Is there a, are there any additional items that anyone would like to call special?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Then is there a motion to approve items L1, L2, L3? I'm sorry. Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 18.
Motion. Okay, seconded.
Terrific, thank you. And would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
President McLean-Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific. We will move to management reports. Item I1, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Latonya Bogan-Jordan. I'm a Director of Partnership Development and Strategic Engagement, and I'm also the co-chair of Women's Council. We're here with Family Care to talk about our lactation program and our wellness program. Jason Perez is filling in for Family Care, and he will do the video, the presentation. We have a video that we want to display, done by our communications team. And then we'll get started with our presentation.
All right, so we're going to start with the video?
Yes.
Terrific.
At the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, we are committed to supporting working parents and creating an inclusive and welcoming workplace for all employees. The arrival of a child is exciting, but can be overwhelming too. Our expansive lactation accommodation program helps provide resources for employees who need lactation support.
In 1985, the Department of Water and Power decided to do it on its assessment to be able to determine what the childcare needs were at DWP. The need was great, so in 1987, the department decided to go ahead and start with a lactation program and expand it throughout the different facilities at DWP. And it became recognized nationwide, being the top model for the lactation program at DWP. It is very important to make the lactation launch more accommodative because it's a very competitive industry. It is very important to make the lactation lounge more accommodating because women need to have a private place. And we know how important it is when we have a private space. You could take your time and the department will be able to support you during those extra minutes that you're in there to be able to have the milk you need for your child.
I heard about the lactation room from this really nice lady in Human Resource. When I was about to go on maternity leave, she told me that if I were to come back, that I should let her know and that she can sign me up. And I can have like a schedule where I can pump and continue to breastfeed while I go back to work. That was pretty cool. There are so many features in this room. One of my favorite is definitely that I can wash my bottles and my pumps in the dishwasher here. And then I love that there's cookies. That really helps with, you know, breastfeeding moms because we can't feel hungry. I like that I can adjust my clothes after I leave the pumping session and make sure that everything is not out of place in my attire.
Other than our lactation lounges, which are very nice, we also loan hospital-grade pumps and provide the necessary attachments to not only our employees, but their dependents.
I heard about the department's breast pump loan program through a coworker. We were discussing it with my baby, and he suggested that I look into this. The lactation accommodation program provides a top-of-the-line hospital-grade breast pump. This equipment, it could be very costly if parents were to pay for out of pocket. And having a powerful and more reliable breast pump helps with increased milk production, with more comfortable and shorter pumping sessions, and with increased milk quality. This supports babies' nutrition and mothers' comfort, which is a great help for the families.
We also have a lactation consultant onsite Tuesdays and Wednesdays between 8:30 and 3. They provide one-on-one consultation by appointment, but also can handle some walk-ins. In addition, they provide educational training and facilitate support groups for our working parents.
So the lactation accommodation program plays a great role in supporting employee families. This support creates an inclusive workplace for the employees by showing the care that department provides for the well-being of the employees' family.
Lactation services are important because, number one, it shows our working parents that LADWP values them. Additionally, transitioning from a bonding leave back into the workplace has its challenges, especially for lactating parents. So providing a space that is safe and sanitary kind of reduces that stress and makes the transition seamless, and it also produces healthy employees and healthy babies.
Okay. And it's also National Breastfeeding Month this month, so we wanted to bring this back and to give you an update, let you know where we are and things that we have to do next. So Jason.
Madam President, Commissioners, it's, as the former manager of Employee Health and Benefits, I spent a lot of time working on this program and these initiatives. And it's an honor and a privilege to be before you today to highlight some of the family care program enhancements that have been implemented through collaboration with the LADWP Women's Council and our labor partners, especially in relation to lactation. So on this slide, kind of briefly describes some of the program's resources. As was mentioned in the video, we have hospital-grade pumps in all of the lactation rooms. And, you know, one of the goals of LADWP's Family Care Office and the lactation accommodation program in particular is to provide a variety of support and resources for parents that have returned to work and are breastfeeding, or for partners of employees that are non-birthing parents as well. So with regard to the latter, the Family Care Office has some Medela pumps available for loan, as the video mentioned, to both employees and their dependents. These are the exact same hospital-grade pumps that are found in the department's lactation rooms, and there are attachment kits that are available through the Family Care Office for them to borrow as well. And as indicated in the slide, about eight pumps are currently on loan, and 13 of the Medela Symphony pumps have been loaned since the beginning of this calendar year. So on this next slide, kind of gives an idea of some of the things that we're doing to support our field employees that have lactation needs. In the picture on the right, there's a lactation pod, which was available for use at the Women's Expo earlier this year. It's a very nice portable space, and it's climate-controlled as well. So it makes it an ideal option for use outdoors. As noted on the slide, the department currently has two lactation pods, and an additional three are expected to be delivered before the end of November.
How do those get deployed? Or how do you make the determination? Because we have to, I believe under state law, we have to, or maybe it's federal law, we have to provide accommodations for anyone who's lactating. Is it based on where we have employees or just how?
It would be based on need. I mean, when I was in Family Care, we tried to be proactive and get it, our finger on the pulse of where there was a need or where there was going to be a need. And with those resources, we would deploy them. And like right now, there's a lactation pod that's deployed at Truesdale. As I'll mention during the later slides, there is a room that's just about to come online there. So that was kind of a stopgap measure. But as they're portable, they can be deployed where there's an additional need that's identified. Okay, so I'd like to again stress that there's been a great partnership between the Family Care Office facilities, supply chain services, the LADWP Women's Council, and the department's labor partners to enhance the lactation accommodation program for participants. Furthering that partnership, IBW Local 18 is providing 50 pumps to the department, 25 of which are the very same Medela brand hospital-grade pumps that are found in our various lactation rooms. The other 25 are portable, hands-free pumps that are also made by Medela, which have the flexibility to support the needs of our field employees. Additionally, IBW Local 18 is sponsoring another lactation room that will be created outside of the John Ferraro Building, which will provide even greater coverage for current and future lactation accommodation program participants. So this slide reflects a list of the LADWP's current lactation room facilities, all of which are either brand-new or have been renovated. Some of the spaces are multi-station rooms, such as the four-station lactation lounge here in the John Ferraro Building on the second floor, which is also connected to the lactation education space. There are lactation rooms in six LADWP facilities outside of the John Ferraro Building. And as I mentioned, a location in the San Fernando Valley at the Truesdale Training Center is about to open. This next slide, Commissioners, it reflects the usage of the rooms. A total of 32 employees are currently utilizing the lactation rooms and a lactation pod, which, as I mentioned, is located at the Truesdale Training Center until that room is ready. With regard to that room at Truesdale, the final walkthrough of that room is scheduled for tomorrow. So if all is in order, it should be open within days or, you know, the coming week or two. Any questions about this slide? Okay. So this slide and some of the slides that follow will show the aesthetics and amenities of the lactation spaces that are available at both JFB and beyond. And to the extent possible, these rooms' color schemes and amenities are similar so that all lactation accommodation program participants will have a soothing, private, well-equipped space with the amenities that they need to properly support their ability to express and store milk. So these are new pictures of new lactation rooms at Figaro Plaza and Third Street. So as you'll see, they all have kind of a blue and white color scheme. The rugs are the same. There are, there's a good ability to view the amenities in this picture. So there are specialized refrigeration units in these rooms that are designed to store breastmilk. There are microwaves, standalone sinks, hospital-grade breast pumps and supplies, and comfortable and easy-to-clean lounge chairs. When I was in the group, the feedback that we received on the spaces was uniformly positive. And I would like to note that Family Care staff and facility staff really went above and beyond to execute the vision of the board and the Women's Council to make these spaces wonderful for those who use them. So these next slides, you can see the color scheme. We, you know, we tried to keep it the same as much as possible. The amenities are all the same to provide a consistent experience. And this last slide depicts the new rooms at the Pacific Stock Exchange on both the penthouse and the 11th and 12th floors. So now I'll bring us to the next topic of the lactation accommodation program. That's parent education and support. That's done through a lactation consultant who's a certified lactation educator and a doula, and support group sessions that focus on lactation and parenting. Group classes on family care topics are offered to program participants. The goal is to provide support and guidance for expecting parents, new parents returning to work. One-on-one lactation consult sessions are held by appointment. Support group sessions are available both in person and virtually on Tuesdays, and group classes are conducted both in person and virtually on Wednesdays of each week. In terms of utilization, you can see in 2022, 45 employees utilize these support services during the last calendar year. And so far, we're at nearly triple that number, 127 for this year. Some of the other things that are done through the lactation accommodation program, the slide will show you a picture of a care kit that employees that have new babies receive. It contains various supplies, such as a swaddle blanket, nursing supplies, and bibs. And 57 of these have been given to new LADWP parents.
And of course, a onesie. That's pretty cute.
It's cute. I need one of those for my grandson. Okay, so the next slide pertains to family medical leave. So for FMLA, employees, supervisors, and managers have access to a wealth of resources related to FMLA on the Internet, including frequently asked questions, sheets, FMLA forums, and a list of the FMLA coordinators and their contact information for each organization within the department. There's also a dedicated email address for family medical leave and a dedicated phone number for the Family Care Office so that employees can have their detailed questions answered in a timely fashion. So this next slide deals with paid parental leave. We've made a lot of progress with our labor partners regarding the establishment of a paid parental leave benefit for LADWP employees. We're very close to finalizing a tentative agreement with IBW Local 18, and that benefit would address gaps that the city's program does not cover. For example, a new hire will be eligible to take paid parental leave on the first day of employment. We look forward to securing those agreements with our labor partners so that they can be submitted to your board for approval. Okay, and the last two slides.
Just give us an update on the timing. I appreciate the effort to make the program more comprehensive, but there's also the desire to implement something. So when, when can we expect to actually be implementing the program?
My understanding is that implementation was to occur next month in September.
Okay, so we're that close. Good. All right. Will you give us an update should that change?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you.
So the last two slides are related to the wellness program and the fitness centers in particular. So the JFB gym is ready for use. An official employee announcement, I understand, is scheduled to be released today. So that'll be nice to get back into the gym. The following slide reflects the 28 LADWP fitness centers that are ready to reopen, not counting the gym here at the John Ferraro Building. And those are in both the LA Basin and the Owens Valley. And it'll be a nice boost to the LADWP's wellness program as employees will once again have access to extremely convenient places in which to improve their physical well-being.
That's it.
That's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I do have a question. First, just a comment, this is a very impressive and comprehensive program, having worked on lactation program for UCLA. I'm very impressed. I was just curious about the room scheduling. And maybe you don't have this issue, but I know that was a challenge we faced in terms of, do you have like a centralized coordination? What is the room, lactation room access? Is it badge-based? Is it keypad? Like, how are you coordinating access for the rooms?
So the scheduling is handled through our lactation accommodation program coordinator. The rooms are badge access.
Okay.
And so there's a calendar that shows when the rooms are available, and that's all managed. I don't, I don't believe there's been any incidences where somebody, you know, wanted to use a room and was not able to.
That's great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? This is incredible. I mean, this is, the lactation rooms, early when I joined, I wanted to visit them. I got an opportunity to see how they've been upgraded and, on the department's own efforts, not because of my pushing. I'm really pleased to see the advancement, the paid family leave, long overdue, I would say. And no doubt, it was harder for you, Mia and Cynthia than it was for me. But I certainly remember pumping on a bathroom floor and, you know, not getting a full pay for, for my time off at all and taking as minimal as possible because I needed to get back to work. So this is very important, from my opinion, to supporting and advancing women and families at LADWP. And I really thank you for all this effort, and I look forward to next month when it gets implemented.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was honored to have been a small part of it.
Anything else?
I just want to also indicate how really floored I am by the presentation. The video was amazing. So again, kudos to our communications team and, and to all of the folks who participated in bringing that forward. It's just so interesting that we are sort of Back to the Future, where DWP was once a leader in this work. I do want to specifically mention Lilly, whose work, both then and now, has been instrumental in moving this forward and the entire Women's Council. It is, for me, a, this is a really interesting moment. I, you know, probably am not the oldest, close to the oldest member of this board. And I, you know, as I sit and watch a presentation that is focused on lactation and wellness and, you know, and family medical leave, it says an awful lot about where we have come as a society in terms of, you know, putting our money where, you know, where our mouth has been regarding supporting families. It is critically important that we, you know, not only take these issues seriously, but invest in them in a way that produces outcomes that are, you know, worthy of and that demonstrate our care and consideration for our employees, both women and men. And this does that in a really significant way. So I'm just thrilled to see how things have evolved over time and look forward to continuing to see things move, you know, see, you know, things come forward that support our working parents. And then finally, particularly pleased with the effort to make sure that we don't overlook women in the field and that we are being thoughtful and, you know, and I do, one final thing, want to say, because I did experience a number of the men in the department who were working and bringing this forward, and I want to thank them as well. A huge learning experience, I know. You know, folks aren't typically used to stopping what they're doing and taking the time to prioritize this kind of stuff on the job. But I know that as part of the evolution, everyone has come to appreciate how important this is to all of us. So I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And with that, we will move to I2.
Next presentation, next presentation will be an update on Project Powerhouse and an amendment to our rules governing our water and electric service. Wendy Yancy, Director of Power, New Business and Electrification, Emile Abdul Shaheed, Assistant Director of the Same Division, will present.
Yeah, for everyone looking around, we're having technical difficulties over here on this computer, so. this computer, so our vice president is moving to something that will work. And somehow my computer has got a mind of its own right now. You ready?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to present the update on Project Powerhouse and to change to Rule 15 in the department's rules governing water and power. I'd like to just remind everyone where, how we got here today. So in February, earlier this year, in February, there was a meeting, I'll call it a roundtable meeting, where the power system actually sat with a number of developers in the Los Angeles area who specialize in this work, this work being providing housing to low-income or affordable housing for residents. And we heard what were some of their obstacles or barriers, if you will, to construct and provide those services and housing. And after hearing some of the, I'll say hurdles that they were facing from the Department of Water and Power, in March, this board adopted a motion that instructed us, us being the new business division in the power system, on looking at ways that we could actually remove some of those barriers. And it enumerated some things that they wanted us to look into. So today we come, and not only are we going to update what has happened since March, we're going to actually codify some of those items that we were asked to look into, to remove the barriers to not only providing low-income housing, but also to help our business community in general. And so with that, we'll start off with a video. Again, our communications team is just, they just knock things out of the park and make you, really, you'll see.
I want to bring up the president of the Board of the Department of Water and Power, Cynthia McLean-Hill.
Earlier this year, in response to Mayor Karen Bass's emergency declaration, LADWP launched the Project Powerhouse Initiative. Through this program, LADWP works with developers like Weingard for building affordable housing projects like this, and we cover the cost of building electrical infrastructure. You know, our team's worked 22 projects since the launch of the mayor's executive directive have already been placed into service and benefited from the expedited approval timeline of Project Powerhouse. These projects provided 1,088 new 100% affordable, both permanent supportive housing units. In total, LADWP has cut the development review, engineering and construction timeline On average, the design phase for the completed project was taken only 40 days, and the construction, 30 days. We are so proud, so grateful, so humble to be part of the massive response that has been marshaled by Mayor Bass, that is supported citywide, and that is advanced by your labor to house our homeless neighbors across the city.
A couple of months ago, she reached out to myself and a handful of other builders of housing for homeless and said, what do you need? And unlike government usually, not only did she listen, but within two weeks she had a plan, and within a week after that, the Board of DWP had approved it. So it's completely unheard of in the spectrum of government that I've ever been associated with. So again, it was a Herculean task, and right there next to her was a woman named Wendy Yancy, who was really implementing all of this and all of those 190 things. Wendy is getting that done. So again, the emphasis here is on people who are doers and not talkers, and this is the result of their doing. A lot of people to thank. A project like this doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen even if people try as hard as they can without a lot of will, without a lot of dedication. All the people you've heard from right now, I just cannot tell them how much we all appreciate the effort. I do want to acknowledge the Department of Water and Power once again. You've heard a couple of names. You've heard Cynthia and you've heard Wendy, but I also want to acknowledge Sir Lord Morris. Sir Lord has been taking this, this entire thing in his fist and said, I'm going to get it done. I don't care if it takes 24-hour day crews to deliver on time. He's doing it. You know what? If you have a beautiful building that doesn't have any power, it's sort of senseless, right? So thank you to the Department of Water and Power. Thank you.
We are LADWP.
And we power LA.
Love it. And so while you heard a couple of names mentioned, one name that just wasn't captured in the video is that of Emile Abdel Shaheed, who I will definitely say, without him, we would, probably would not have the progress that we have made on Project Powerhouse as well as the rule change. And so with that, I will turn it over to Emile to present the updates on Project Powerhouse.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present. So we have two topics today, Project Powerhouse updates, and then we'll discuss the amendment of the rule. First, we'll go through the Project Powerhouse updates. So taking a look at where we were in March of this year to where we are today or as of July, the snapshot, as you can see, we have about 245 projects that have come into our queue, and we've taken those projects from the submittal phase over to the construction phase. We have about 208 total projects that have requested electrical service as of this date. So we're about 36 more projects in our queue from where we were in March, and we continue to advance these projects from one phase to the other in an efficient and expedited We have our power system dashboard. We use this to monitor our progress, report up to our executive management. And a few key things to take away from this is, the projects are coming in weekly, and we are doing our best to meet our commitments. And as you can see here at the bottom right, where the green and the yellow boxes are, most of our commitments are being met. We are working toward to continue to maintain that progress. And one key thing about the projects, the major accomplishments, is as of today, we have 1,849 units that we've been able to energize as part of Project Powerhouse, to the total 29 projects up to date. One, a few people I'd like to mention, just to, this doesn't work without the collaboration, the coordination of all the people that are involved, not just engineers, but also the construction forces where the rubber meets the road. So I'd like to acknowledge all the district superintendents and leads, Jaime Garcia from West LA, Frank Spencer and Ken Booth from the Palms District, Dave Soto from Central, Rich Quinn from the Northridge District. Those are some of the leads, and they have plenty of crews that work underneath them that make this all possible. I'd also like to say thank you to William Ariola, who helps us, who's that final step, helps us get that meter installed that ultimately gives power to these facilities. Norm Cahill and the Power Construction and Maintenance Team that helped us build out these stations, and Walter Rodriguez and the entire Power Transmission Distribution Division for all their support. When we call them, they pick up and they get things done. And because of that, we're able to see these projects continue to come online.
Wait, before you leave that, how does something get on this dashboard? Is it first designated by the mayor's office on the prior slide as an AH100 in order to be able to be eligible for the ED1, you know, accelerated efforts?
So the projects that we do get are from the mayor's list, so we do meet with the mayor on a weekly basis. There's an affordable housing tracker that we all have access to, and we download all those projects that have permits or in the permitting process so that we have access to them. So when they come to us, we know to flag them as 100% affordable and supportive housing.
Okay, so we're not making that, in other words, we're not making that designation. The mayor's office is making it, and we're relying on them to then.
Correct.
Okay.
So some updates on Project Powerhouse.
I just want to respond to that a little differently.
Okay.
If a project comes to us first, and they haven't visited the mayor's office, and it's eligible for Project Powerhouse, we actually have it added to the mayor's list.
Okay.
So it's not that somehow you've got to find your way to the mayor's office and then they tell us. Project Powerhouse, the criteria is a standard criteria that we, that is objective and applicable. So to the extent that the mayor's list is the tracking list, but to the extent that, you know, somebody starts with us, we don't say, oh, you're not on the mayor's list regardless of what, yeah, you're not eligible. We simply take the project in, have it added to the mayor's list, and then proceed.
Okay, that's helpful.
And to that point, we actually have a meeting later today with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation coordinating with the mayor's office so that we can make sure that those projects are included as part of the mayor's list. So we are taking those steps to make, proactively to make sure those projects get added to the mayor's list. So since March, since March of this year, we had a Project Powerhouse workshop where we invited over 300 developers, 300 people, developers, to really understand the power new business process, what it takes to bring electrical services to your projects, some of the major requirements that are not always obvious to everybody. And we felt like that was a successful workshop, and we plan on having this on a quarterly basis. And I would like to announce that the next workshop will be held on September 6th. So we will be sending out invites, we'll be working with our corporate communications team to make sure that gets out to everybody. We're looking forward to continuing that engagement with the customers. And we are having more active pre-submittal meetings and workshops with all these various developers, similar to what Aaron was talking about with LA Connect, to make sure that we discuss these requirements before pen goes to paper and designs get completed. So the power requirements are taken into consideration, making the whole process a lot more efficient. So we are trying to take advantage of those opportunities, bringing these developers in, bringing in all our subject matter experts and making them available. And we continue to identify the various staffing opportunities to support Project Powerhouse. This is a very important initiative, as declared by the emergency, in addition that we have our other projects that we continue to work on. So we want to make sure we're dealing with everything appropriately.
Do you get a sense in those first two bullets on that last slide that those efforts are working? I know there's been a lot of confusion in the developer community about what does and doesn't qualify for ED1, and I know a lot of this is about getting ahead of some of these submission issues, right, when people bring you plans and they're not, they're not qualified and have to go back to the drawing board. So I think these efforts are wonderful. Do we get a sense that they're working, our developers coming into the pipeline, understanding the process well? I'm also curious what beyond in-person workshops and meetings we're doing to kind of market the availability of Project Powerhouse and some of these services to the developer community more widely, because this program is so wonderful, it's, I'm really, I've been really excited about it ever since I found out I was going to be here. Well, before that, I mean. And I think it presents such an opportunity for us to use it as a tool to convince some maybe more recalcitrant people in the developer community to start co-developing affordable units inside their projects, or maybe even step into the affordable housing space for the first time. So anyway, I asked you two questions to review. The first is, is this stuff working? I know there's all that confusion around ED1. Are we seeing developers come into the pipeline with a firm understanding our pre-submittals going well? And then secondly, what else are we doing from a marketing standpoint, not just to kind of talk to the people who already know, but to maybe get some more hearts and minds into the pipeline?
So I don't have any stats to confirm whether it's working or not, but we do have, we feel like there's a lot of momentum being built with the pre-submittal workshops. We are getting more customers that are dealing with encroachment-related issues upfront, so that is a good indicator that it is working, and just more and more of these meetings are taking place. So I would like to say that we believe it is working, and as we continue to have more and more developers understand its availability, we feel like we're going to have more success through the pre-submittal process. In terms of the broader audience, we are working with the mayor's office on a weekly basis. There was a CEO, CAO webinar that was held to help discuss Project Powerhouse, what LADWP was doing, but also what all the other departments are doing to support the mayor's initiative. So there's a broader reach from the mayor's office that is occurring, and we're consistently involved with that. We've taken, I think, what I believe is a very large step to address the emergency declaration, and I do believe a lot of the other city departments are taking our lead and taking similar steps, whether it's through communication or process improvements on their end as well. So I do believe that more and more developers are being reached as a result of the mayor's office and what we're doing through Project Powerhouse.
Well, perhaps to get a clearer answer to that question in the future, I mean, this is the, as Wendy mentioned, like, this is the child of a roundtable, right, with the developer community and with the assisted housing community. And I think, you know, maybe at some point in the program, you can be in another roundtable to get some broad-based 360 feedback on how the program's going, where the pain points still exist, you know, not just from the developers, obviously, but from the people inside LADWP running the program.
Can I bring up another point associated with that is the architecture community, the engineer, you know, architecture, engineering community, who are actually, you know, are having to effectuate and produce the drawings and make sure that they're, and so I know the AIA has been meeting with Will Wright and Paul Habib and a number of other people, and I did participate in a call this week, and there was still a lot of frustration among the architects about some of the problems they were having, which they are servicing the developers, right? So I think it's really important to also include some of the professional groups in this nest of conversation, and it's just to make it, you know, make it clear.
So a couple, just a couple of things on those points, and maybe Joe Ramallo may want to assist in responding to some of these questions.
Sure.
But Project Powerhouse launched in March.
Yes.
So it's July.
There have been a number of, there were a number of newspaper stories upon its launch.
I also know that we've provided materials to, and it's being reported in various business groups who are very interested, you know, with whom architects and developers, et cetera, belong, who are very interested. They're moving information about the program forward as well. The department, you know, has begun their own outreach, and I agree with you, this is incredibly important work. The mayor's office is also amplifying it, but we are certainly able to, in fact, we have launched a newsletter that deals with power issues. And so to your, to your point, getting the word out is the next huge step, right? You can do all the great policy in the world, but if nobody knows, it doesn't, it doesn't make, it doesn't work. And so, Joe, is there, are there any additional thoughts that you have around supporting outreach related to this?
Just that we'll be continuing to produce content and to distribute it and get it out, including consideration of this matter today. Should the board approve, the policy change will be amplifying that as well with coverage in the newsletter, press release.
Oh, and I also want to say that, I know, because I've spoken to a number of council offices, but also Matt Hale, because a lot of the first stops or a lot of the folks that are building affordable housing are, you know, they often, in fact, always are working with council offices. So one of the key targets for our education efforts have been council deputies, so that they can, you know, make sure that the folks in their community that have an interest are aware of what's happening with Project Powerhouse.
I would also add that the program has really demonstrated success with the numbers that Emile's going to share with you, and that will help generate coverage as well, because the numbers are tremendous and will continue to grow. So as we do that, it's going to get more and more media interest. We did get a call from an editorial writer this morning at one of the major papers as well that's very interested in this, so it will continue to really reverberate, and we want to continue to try to encourage and spread that information. Chambers of Commerce as well, some of whom have submitted letters or who testified today in support of this item.
Just to piggyback on that, from March to today, we've had additional 250 projects enter the queue. So, and then we did have one workshop where we mentioned over 300 participants. The upcoming workshop, we've already have a list of 700 invitees. So word is getting out, if you will, or we will actually do our best to get the word out, but I think it's, I don't want to say, you know... But I, I think it's, I don't want to say, you know, it's okay.
I mean, five hundred and qualitative data shows that this is going well. No, that's wonderful, thank you. I, I'm happy to have an opportunity just to hear all that. It's tremendously.
One question, just about the, the amount of, that are in the queue. Do you have a sense of how many units that ends up being?
Actually, I don't have a sense of what the, the total projects, the number of units are. We, you know, as far as the project's completed, we're trying to track how many units we can get energized. And right now, we're at 1,849 units energized since, since.
You said 27 or something?
Since, since, since this year when the mayor declared the emergency, we started tracking it.
Right, no, but you said 27.
Twenty-nine total projects.
Projects, oh, 29. Okay, so that's a, that's a lot per project.
Thank you, that's some wonderful feedback and questions. So continuing through the presentation, we've been implementing Project Powerhouse and working with all the, the various projects that we have, and we've identified 14 projects that are nearly complete with the design or in construction with the underground line extensions totaling about 7,887 feet of conduit and 15 substructures. So that's all being incorporated as part of Project Powerhouse. So that's a great benefit to the, to the effort to build these affordable housing projects. We've worked internally to make sure our staff can answer questions as they get them from the various developers or people they're in contact with, the single points of contact for the projects. And we have crews working on several line extensions right now. We can visit some of them right now, so that's great information. And then one other key element is that we've worked with our legal team to create a mechanism to be able to reimburse customers for the construction of the line extension. So there, there's an option where the developers can build out these line extensions, and, and they do so for various reasons, like schedule constraints, to continue to move their projects forward. So we have developed that mechanism, and after today, we'll be implementing it with the board approval.
And just to piggyback, we only add that, added that mechanism for, due to schedule constraints, if you will, because our crews have first right of refusal. So it only goes out if we can't do it, if we can't meet the deadlines.
And so we continue to implement Project Powerhouse, hiring and training, the necessary positions across our division, new business, and all the support groups is going to be key, and we'll continue to engage the, the necessary executive management as that, as those needs continue to arise. And we're going to continue to do our, our surgical coordination internally with our staff and externally with the mayor's office so that we're all in sync and keeping these projects moving forward. So before we enter into the next topic, I'll just pause for a second if there's any other questions or follow-ups.
When you say next step, I'm sorry, what is this, what's the next slide? Are you moving to the next item?
Next topic, yes.
Okay. Then first, the other additional comment I would have about this is that we, Wendy, Emile, and Simon were kind enough to pull together a very, a significant representation of the Power New Business Group, along with all of the different support units across the department who are making Project Powerhouse happen, so that we could share with them the feedback that we're getting in the larger community and thank them for their efforts to make this happen. This just, I, represents, and Arm, I want to say thank you to you as well, a very different way of engaging on the part of the department, one where the department has been unleashed and is being permitted, our employees across various areas, to be very proactive and to think about themselves as part of a continuum of providing service, not just water and power, but providing housing, and looking at our role in, in responding to the, you know, social justice and human rights issue of our time in the city. So what I want to say to the board is, I have heard more about this particular effort from employees at this organization than just about anything that I've been a part of. And they, to a person, say how, how rewarding it is to know and to be able to do something. And I think for many of us, as we drive across the city of Los Angeles, or walk down the street, and we encounter, you know, the despair, you often just, I mean, you want to know and, and try to figure out how you can do something. LEDWP's employees, not this, this we talk, we, when I say LEDWP, it feels like this big monolithic thing, but it's really people. The people at LEDWP have stepped up in a tremendous way and are doing something. And to the extent that we can all do our part, you know, we can make a difference and address this crisis in the way that it needs to be addressed in order to get people sheltered off the street. So, so we have, as a board, conveyed our thanks, but I am pleased to have the opportunity to do it now as well.
Thank you. So we'll go transition to the, the next topic, which is the amendment to Rule Number 15 of the rules governing water and electric service. So this has been a process, and just to give you a little insight of, of what we've done to accommodate the process, we've, we've had various ideas, we've developed those ideas, compared them with other utilities, and we've, we've moved into the affordable housing situation, the emergency, and so that's been introduced to this line extension process and reform process. And now we're looking to change the rule, something that's more widely applicable to all developers, where everybody can pay their share of the line extension as opposed to the rule that we have today. So here's an example of a, of a, of a line extension that takes today's rule and the new rule and compares it. So if you take a thousand-foot line extension with two substructures, which is very typical, the current rule, which dictates that it's built at the customer's expense, would cost a developer about $2.2 million. Under the new rule, where we would take the cost of the line extension and share it amongst the present and future customers, would cost a developer about $368,000. This takes into consideration how many customers that line extension or that system will be able to feed, and, and there's a formula that we use in order to calculate that. It's a very simple formula. So with that.
Can we talk about that formula for a second? So that's amortized over a number of years, over a number of customers, present and future. Is there a benchmark for, is it every time, is it the same amount of years it's amortized across? And for present customers, do we have perhaps a percentage estimate for what it's going to do to their bill? Is it, is it spread across a bill? Is there an assessment that's made?
So this, this is a fee that would be paid before construction gets started and obviously before we connect our services to them. So it's part of their development, the, the cost to develop.
Sorry, I might not have been clear. Not the, not the cost to the new development, but the rest of that 2.2 million that we're going to recoup through present and future customers who are also going to benefit from the service line extension. Does, that's amortized over a number of years, I imagine. I wonder how many years it's amortized over? And I also wonder how we'll be recouping those costs from those other customers? Is it baked into their bills? Is there a one-time assessment? And how much do we expect that to impact their costs?
Now, I was just going to, go ahead.
So, so the way we plan on, if, if you don't mind, I'll get through the presentation, we'll make sure we answer that question.
Great.
Before, before we're done. So just to kind of go through what a line extension is for everybody to, to level set. So we have an existing conduit system that runs down the street. This yellow portion would be considered that line extension. And so it would be, for example, a 12 duct system could be 1,000 feet and two substructures. And we're trying to feed this new customer that's here in green. And so, oops, and so essentially what would happen is that 1,000 feet of underground line extension, I apologize, it's not the final version of the presentation, but it's okay, it has all the information we need. The, that cost will be shared amongst the new customer and any other parcel that will be developed in the future. The green portion would be the final piece, which is a customer-specific portion. That portion will be 100% the responsibility of that new customer, since it doesn't benefit anybody else but that one parcel. And as we continue to design and implement new line extensions, we would, we would tag parcels or assign parcels their share of the cost as we continue to design and implement new line extensions in the future. So just to summarize what we're changing in the rule, for all developers, we're changing the rule so that the, the actual cost will be shared amongst all the identified customers, present and future. And, and that applies to the conduits and the structure, and the structures for underground line extensions. We're also codifying what we discussed for Project Powerhouse, essentially implementing, allowing us to, to bear the cost and reimburse the customers for their, for those underground line extensions as well. So those are the two major items that we're addressing here today. So looking ahead, we're trying to hire, we, we're going to need to hire and train staff as our, as our projects increase, our line extensions increase. We do believe that this is going to help break down barriers for developers across the city, and we want to make sure that we're ready to, ready to take on those responsibilities. And we are in the process of building a geographic information system, front-end application, that's going to be able to take in this information. So as it's implemented, we can track it from day one. So we all know utility infrastructure is a key component to economic development, and really looking at what we're going to be able to do for the future for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, being able to get more capacity into underserved communities, and, and making sure that everybody can pay their fair share, so nobody's waiting on a line extension to get built out. Everybody can, everybody understands what their piece of the pie is and can go ahead and, and start their development project. So now to answer your question regarding how many, over what period of time? So typically, these, these line extensions, they're, they're more geared toward our higher voltage 34.5 KV system, which are becoming more and more prevalent now due to electrification and due to us needing more capacity at each one of our sites. And so there's not, we, we don't believe there's going to be a large timeframe between from project to project or parcel to parcel. Understanding that each line extension is about four to six, can feed about four to six different parcels, we're probably looking at a, a five to 10-year timeline where that, that money gets recouped and everybody does pay their fair share.
And so, and I, I think a couple of things. This would be an assessment, right, sorts of fee that each developer would pay as their development project comes online. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and the problem that we're solving is the problem associated with, if you go back to your green box, you know, the first new customer comes along and they're looking to develop a project on this corridor, and they're told that in order for their project to be served, there's going to need to be a line extension. And the cost of that line extension is going to be $2 million because they're first. And the next customer that comes along pays nothing because that line extension was paid for by that first customer. So you either have to be in a position to have your project bear the cost, or you have to wait until somebody else comes along and puts in the infrastructure, so we have an undue burden on the first guy and a free ride for the other four, five, six parcels that are going to be served by that extension. So what you've done is you now have a formula that will cause the new customer, the first customer, to pay what would be their apportioned cost. The second customer, when they come, when you say recoup, the recouping is the department, because we've built the line extension.
Correct.
The department will be recovering the cost of that work as new developers come in.
Exactly.
And your estimate is that it will be five, maybe 10 years max before a particular, in general, when we're looking at development corridors, before we would be fully reimbursed for that work.
Correct.
And just to clarify one more thing, it's, this is only for the public right-of-way areas?
This rule change, yes.
Yes, this is for public right-of-way.
Yeah.
And when you mentioned present and future customers in the rule change language, by present, you mean existing DWP customers who later might upgrade their service to a higher voltage, and then we would assess them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and what we mean by present, the present customer is that requesting and the first, essentially the first one in.
Thank you, that makes more sense.
Yeah, that's, it's not, so it wouldn't be, just to be, just to make sure that I understand this, if there's a new customer that's coming onboard, and, because there are different situations, right? So you have customers that are already there, they don't need anything, they're dealing with what exists. So the new customer that comes onboard, if they need the line extension because they need an upgrade, that's the first customer, that's the first assessment. You're not going to assess anybody else that exists already.
Correct.
Correct.
You're only assess, you're only going to assess now new developers.
Correct. Who use that system.
Who use that system.
So here, like, if the green would be present customer.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
That's why we're building out that line extension.
The key, the key aspect is present and future customers that benefit from the new line extension will be paying pro rata share of their cost.
Okay. And just, so there's absolute clarity with respect to the rule change that this accommodates. And there are two pieces that are happening here. There is the codification of power, of Project Powerhouse, which, which, where the department is picking up the cost of the infrastructure in total. And then this project, and then this represents an iteration where we are not waiving cost for the remainder of the development community, but we are modifying the way in which we collect costs from that community in a way that significantly lowers the cost for developers moving forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or additional questions or comments with respect to this presentation?
May I ask another?
A hundred percent.
Okay, so I, I have a couple more quick questions. I, I just want to say, these questions are, I think, important, they're out of curiosity, but overall, I'm, I'm very supportive of this rule change. I think the president said it well, this is a human rights issue. And I think when people look at human rights issues, they don't often think of tools like this as being human rights tools, but they absolutely are. This is, this is huge. Do we have an estimated budget impact for the Project Powerhouse part of this rule change? Do we have an anticipated impacted budget for all of those projects that we're going to start covering 100% of in this fiscal year or in the following?
So right now, looking at what we have currently in our queue, so we have these 14 projects that are at the end of design or in construction, that estimated cost is about $10.2 million. So that, you can consider that hitting this fiscal year. We have another, about $40 million estimated worth of projects that is in the queue. When that's going to hit is going to be determined by other factors. So, you know, we, we can do some math to estimate roughly maybe $20 million for the fiscal year, but that can change.
It'd be a really helpful thing to get in that dashboard so that we could see where those costs.
And just to add a broader point, not just for this presentation, but I think for all things that come before the board, they should have the financial implications of everything. And that was one thing I had asked about as well.
And frankly, if we simply, as we, assuming that we are going to advance this, this particular resolution, or, or Item 14, I think we'll want to consider adding to Item 14 the recommendations that were made by, by Dr. Pickle, because they go specifically to tracking the cost associated with these various motions, I mean, with these various activities.
My last question is kind of about interagency coordination here. So you mentioned a high level of coordination with the mayor's office, of course. I wonder what it looks like with inspections. Are we doing anything to make sure inspections are expedited on the back end of this? If we're expediting submissions, approvals, construction, what, what about that last piece? Because I know that's where a lot of these projects are getting stuck.
The short answer is yes. From a DWP perspective, we're getting our inspectors out there within 24 to 48 hours of when they're ready. If not, being there when they're ready. We're, the last, Building and Safety, they're part of the expediting and also for these line extensions, the Bureau of Contract Administration, the Bureau of Engineering, and our own engineers inspect these line, line extensions. So we are all coordinating this effort, and when it's not happening, we get the, the emails and the phone calls to make sure it happens ASAP. And so it, it's working. And so it's working, and we are getting out there, if not same day, next day.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, these projects are flagged on all ends, and so everyone knows when they see these types of projects to, to really expedite everything, so.
So, and, are you finished with your question?
I'm finished with my, yeah, please.
So the, this is coming out of the Executive Directive number, number one, and, and as long as that stays into effect, this is the way we will proceed. I'm wondering what, what, how we will memorialize should Executive Directive One no longer be in the case, because we, we need to technically revert.
That, that would take a board action. So basically, and just a slight sort of tweak as to how this was brought forward, the Project Powerhouse motion was not a motion to explore, it was a motion to do. And so that motion was adopted, and, and the staff has implemented Project Powerhouse. The codification of that, what was coming back to this board, was the opportunity to review the language, make sure that it was approved by council, that shifted, or that changed the rule to align with the direction that the board had given. To the extent that something changes that causes us to need to revisit, then the board, in collaboration with council, will need to take that up and revisit. The second piece of this, and it's a little complicated because they're combined, is not tied to the executive, executive directive, and is simply the continuation of the department's effort to modernize or to bring into alignment from a service perspective, how we are supporting the development of projects in the city of Los Angeles, recognizing that it was this board that set the current policies that have proven so difficult and obstructive to the development community. So the staff was, has been asked to review those policies and practices, look at our capacity, and to come up with a means of bringing them into greater alignment with both the rest of the industry, and also both with policies and practices that facilitate and support the work of the people that we serve. And I know that we have not seen that in this presentation, but literally, LEDWP, as I understand it, has been an outlier in terms of the ways in which we've been applying fees to the development community. And again, that was a matter that was recommended by our staff and adopted by this board, and so we now have the opportunity to shift that in a way that better aligns with customer needs.
Yes, I agree. That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
One, one question?
Sure.
Extending that, for the all development, all developer group, part of the board letter said something about you compared to other utilities. Have we been able to look at the relative commercial load growth at those utilities versus DWP? Did this have a, did the old policy have a measurable impact on load growth in that area?
While I don't have actual numbers, what I will tell you is that I think it did impact load growth because folks would not build. So more often than not, sitting in council office meetings where developers are gathered, and they're trying to figure out who's going to go first, projects wouldn't get built. I distinctly remember back in November of 2021, the EV community came to this board and shared some of the hurdles that they were actually facing as related to building charging facilities in the city, and that was one of the main issues as well. And so I do believe that sharing the cost in, with the development community will, our loads will, our loads will increase, and as you know, as it relates to the EVs, we need our loads to increase. So while I don't know exactly what SMD or Edison, what their actual loads were or whatever, but they did do their, they have varying schemes, if you will, as it relates to cost sharing for line extensions, but I definitely know for DWP, this will definitely increase, increase our loads.
Yeah, I, I remember the presentation on EVs, and the fact that LA City comparatively had a relatively small growth in charging facilities relative to adjoining areas. So the biggest benefit for customers here is load growth, which means we're dividing the sales across the bigger base. So that's, that's potentially very positive.
Exactly.
And I think that, you know, we talk about, you know, the word developer, you know, is almost a pejorative in some conversations, but, but for us, these are, these are the people that we serve, these are our customers. And thinking about how we approach that service in a way that meets their needs, that is fair, that supports the actual development of housing and commercial projects, and, you know, we, we're not going to be able to, you know, just build our way out of this homeless crisis by building affordable, I mean, by, by building low-income housing, and we're going to have to build market-rate housing too. We've got to build a spectrum. And the only way to do that is to remove as many of the impediments, artificial impediments that we have control over. And while there are financial impacts, and I appreciate that, I also, you know, appreciate the extent to which equity's got to mean something in every context. And it is simply, you know, not consistent with, you know, our own commitments around equity to burden a particular class of customers because, you know, because we can, and because we think that they somehow, you know, have the money and can, and can afford it. You know, this, this fair share prospect is, is far more accountable, far fairer, and there's something, there's still in my mind a question about the degree to which private entities should be paying for public infrastructure development. I continue to have a question about that, and will continue to, to work with staff and think through that as just a general philosophical matter, as opposed to paying for the services that they get. But this is a huge step forward, and so I appreciate seeing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah. I have, I, I did not have the luxury of seeing the comparative analysis to other utilities, and would like you to follow up with me on that if you could send me, because it was surprising for me to hear that we are an outlier, particularly since I know Edison has this similar policy. So maybe Edison and LEDWP are the outliers, but with that universe, it didn't seem like we were outliers. So it'd be helpful to have that full context and to better understand why we got where we are here. While everything we're talking about makes sense, and I share the desire to want, remove the impediments and try to facilitate the solutions here, I do like to look back at history and understand it before we move forward. That said, I am comfortable moving forward, but I do want the, the follow-up so that I can confirm that that, I'm comfortable with it.
We'll provide that. Thank you.
Just quickly, I don't want to, it's a long session, but I do want to bring in issues that have come up and, from some developers, and that, and from DWP is also the public realm, the sidewalks and the street with the lighting, and of course, trees, how a lot of trees are, there are impediments associated with the location of all the, the different electric, you know, sort of work that needs to happen. And so I, I really want to make sure that at some point, there's some, in one of your working sessions, there's a conversation about what happens in that public realm. You know, in the end, we do want to create a, a city that is, you know, that is livable, and where shade matters, and that public experience for a lot of people who are going to be taking public transportation or walking ideally, are all going to be sort of live in a, you know, it's an opportunity right now, because so much construction is happening.
Okay. Terrific. Then with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, next presentation is going to be on updates on energy markets. We have Pijua Chua and Faranak Sarbas will be making the presentation.
Dennis is not with us?
He's in Sacramento. Faranak, his manager is here, yes.
Just checking the time. I guess it's officially good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The purpose of today's presentation is to give you an update on the California energy market. So as a load-serving entity, LEDWP undertakes wholesale marketing activities such that we can plan on a day-to-day basis the amount of energy resources and transmission capacity needed to meet our demand. Including in this marketing efforts are the economic purchase of energy, but also the sale of energy in excess of what we need to serve our native load. In addition, through a city ordinance, LEDWP is authorized to engage in the buying and selling of wholesale energy up to 18 months per transaction. The California Independent System Operator administers several energy markets to facilitate the buying and selling of electricity in California. These markets help ensure the efficient allocation of electricity resources while maintaining grid reliability. So I will go over briefly each of those markets. So the real-time market operates closer to the time that the electricity need to be delivered. The participants submit bids and offers for both the energy and ancillary services in real time. This is done typically in five-minute intervals. This real-time market helps balance the supply and demand as actual conditions change in the, in the grid. The next one is the day-ahead market. So in the day-ahead market, participants submit their bids and offers to buy and sell electricity. The difference is, instead of the five-minute intervals, this is for the next day. So the markets clear the day-ahead schedule based on the bids, and then determines the price of the energy and the associated services with it. This provides the participants then a forward look ahead at the electric prices, which helps them plan for their operations. The last one is the Energy Imbalance Market, or EIM. EIM is a real-time energy trading platform that extends beyond California's borders. It allows the utilities and balancing authorities in neighboring western states to both buy and sell energy to better balance the demand and the supply, and also reduce any energy imbalance in the grid. So to cover what EIM is, it's a voluntary market, that's the most important thing, that allows the energy to be transferred across balancing authority areas. So from there, let's, let's build a little bit on that. What is a balancing authority? A balancing authority is responsible for integrating resource plants ahead of time, maintaining the balance between the generation and the load within its own balancing authority area, and also it needs to support the power system frequency in real time. The primary objective of the EIM is to quickly dispatch generation to meet the load across a broader geographic region. The economic dispatch is done in five-minute intervals to meet the immediate needs, and also to manage the congestion in transmission circuits. In this trading platform, the participants have the flexibility to still control their generation, their generators. On top of that, the participants are also still responsible for their own compliance requirements, as required by NERC and WEC reliability standards, but it allows the participants to gain access to a larger pool of diverse resources across multiple western states. In addition, participants are able to sell their excess electricity generation to participants that are in need. So what that does is it creates an economic benefit for the seller, but then it also, conversely, gives an operational and reliability benefit for the buyer. Since this market is only to address energy imbalance, it does not address the resource adequacy requirements of participating entities. So here's a, a map of the current EIM participants. When this was implemented in 2014, since that time, there are 22 participants. LEDWP joined in 2021. From what you can see on this map, this represents approximately 79% of the load within the Western Interconnection. So what are some of those benefits that we have seen in the EIM? One is with the increased real-time energy trading across the Western Interconnection, we have seen a reduction in the curtailment of excess renewable resource generation. Second, with the introduction of the economic dispatch, we have also seen operational flexibility and an increase in our transfer capability. Since the EIM participants are able to sell their surplus renewable energy, DWP has been able to purchase that excess, which reduces our GHG emissions, because we're able to now import that renewable energy whenever we see a spike in our load.
Excuse me, Pijua. Do you have some numbers to support that?
I do. Next slide.
Okay.
So what we've seen on the EIM benefits so far, this graph depicts for you the monthly estimated EIM net benefit we have seen since we had joined in 2021. So how did we determine this EIM net benefit? So we utilize meter readings that we have gotten from our generation resources. Also then, we also use the actual generation cost. This is computed using the heat curves plus the prevailing natural gas prices, and then also from there, compare the settlement statements that we receive. So in this net benefit, we also have to look at both the import and the export. So in the export, that is the difference between, when we do the math, it's the export revenue, along with the cost that, of the generator that supplied it. Now, conversely, what is the EIM import gain is, we try to answer the question of what would have been the system cost if we did not execute those import. So adding up all of this monthly dollars, we come up to $86.52 million since we have joined in April 2021.
And then specifically, the renewable benefits? How are you able to track those? And then specifically the renewable benefits, how are you able to track those?
Are you looking at GHG emissions or?
Well, you had mentioned that we are able to take advantage of importing renewable power as it becomes available, but I don't know how you do that.
So when we end up importing that renewable energy, we essentially look at the cost at that time since it's a surplus versus what it would take for us to, let's say, run a natural gas plant and then an economic decision is made on whether or not to purchase that excess.
But how are you, how do you tag the renewable? How do you know it's renewable? Imports aren't, at least my understanding was they were not specified, so typically.
So may I?
Yeah. To participate in EIM market, we have to be resource adequate the day before. That's a requirement. The energy imbalance market is used only to fill those imbalances that we may see. Sometimes when there is excess renewable energy in the system, we will take advantage of that based on economic dispatch and purchase renewable energy to fill that imbalance. That's what it's used for.
Right. I guess I'm not understanding how are you actually tracking that it's renewable? Because the way that the bidding, I understand, is not specified.
Yes. When the merchant generators bid their, you know, resources into the energy imbalance market, they e-tag their resources as renewable and Cal ISO's EIM actually tracks which ones are renewable, which ones are generated from natural gas and what have you.
Okay. So we are specifying particularly only to procure the renewables in that?
Correct.
And then we're then getting the, taking the credit for that in our, you know, power content mix.
We can double-check on that, but we have all that data from the EIM, whether it's a renewable resource or not.
And did you have anything to add?
Well, I was just going to say, all of the participants in EIM have to put in their resources, what it is, is it natural gas, renewables? And so when our planners look at it and see, oh, these resources are available, maybe there's over-generation of solar at particular times of the day, they then say, don't run the gas plant with Cal ISO's input. Don't run your gas plant, take this power and you know it's renewable.
Okay. My information may be out of date. I thought it was unspecified imports, so, but this is a long time ago. So it's, it sounds like they're now specified.
And another way to be able to tell, because we could see the pricing in the market, the surplus is negatively priced or extremely low. And on top of that, the way the e-tag format is, then you would know where it originated from and what path it's taking to get to you. So the next market that the California ISO is introducing is the Extended Day Ahead Market, or EDAM. So the EDAM is again, just like EIM, it is a voluntary market that is looking to extend over now multiple balancing area authorities that are currently participating in the EIM. So the additional benefit of this is since EIM is real-time, now with EDAM, we can get into the day-ahead timeframe. It's important to note, though, that EIM participants do not have to participate into EDAM once it is finalized. However, if an entity is seeking to participate in the EDAM, they must remain in the EIM to be able to get into the day-ahead market. Also, another thing to note is EDAM requires that the participants must come into this market resource adequate already, meaning that you need to have enough to cover not only your load and your reserves because then that prevents that particular entity from leaning on other EIM participants to cover their need. So the EDAM stakeholder process is currently underway. The anticipated end date of that stakeholder process is next year in March and then the anticipated go-live date is a year after that in April 2025. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Faranak Sarbas to give you a little bit more information regarding the transmission aspect and resource adequacy of EDAM.
Thank you, Pijoy. And good afternoon, board members. My name is Faranak Sarbas. I'm the manager of transmission planning and asset management. With that, I'd like to just briefly discuss the EDAM, the two elements in EDAM which are important and critical going through this process. The first, the first condition that is important to EDAM is the resource adequacy. Resource adequacy, it's a mandatory planning and procurement process that ensures that there is enough capacity and reserves for the grid operators to maintain a balanced supply and demand across the electricity system. Every participant in EDAM must meet this resource adequacy requirement individually and independently. Meeting, that means that all the parties must have adequate resource supplies to fulfill their demand for the typical consumption level that they have. Every EDAM participants, including CalISO, they have, they must pass the sufficiency test, meaning that they need to report their power commitment and available supply. The EDAM software will then test, assess this data, ensure that an entity is not relying on the market to cover intentional, long-term capacity shortfall or engaging in excessive energy dumping. As Pijoy highlighted earlier, EDAM is not a resource adequacy market. Each load-serving entity in EDAM must continue to proactively plan for the resource adequacy needs independent of the market. The second condition that is, that is important to make a note is that availability of the transmission capacity. That is essential for enabling cost-efficient energy transfer between the supply and demand. Those participants with surplus after their demand is met with surplus of transmission, they voluntarily are able to provide the excess transmission to the EDAM market. And with that, it does first optimize the market and in return, CalISO will then financially compensate the usage of that transmission capacity as part of the, you know, what they're offering to the participants. EDAM will also evaluate the entity's transmission capacity as part of that sufficiency test. The benefit of EDAM are realized through the energy, when the energy can seamlessly flow from the supply and demand without any depending or leaning on other participants. By accepting, the condition for EDAM is that it only accepts the resource adequate entities and it incentivizes them to, by use, if they put in their excess energy capacity, this will enable or they're aiming that EDAM will establish a market where supply aligns the demand and to balance the market dynamics. If you go to the next one. So the table that you see in front of you is a comparative review of the two, the key aspects of EIM and EDAM. EIM operates in a real world, like in real time. EDAM function is based on day-ahead market. Both markets share voluntary nature, but they do grant participants a wider pool of resources spanning across the western region. And both EIM and EDAM, they do, they are, they tend or they are aiming and retaining the autonomy of each balancing area and let each balancing area manage their respective region, which is also important to LEDWP as a balancing authority and, you know, we are committed in maintaining self-autonomy in RBA. A primary distinction in between these two markets are in the usage of the transmission. In the EDAM market, the transmission that is provided voluntarily to the market, it is being compensated by CalISO based on, based on their participation, which does create an additional revenue stream for the participants. In contrast, in EIM, does not consider the transmission in the transaction due to the nature of its five-minute interval is impractical to follow the, you know, this transaction. Additionally, EDAM offers ancillary services for the market. Those services included regulations, spinning and non-spinning reserve, which are vital for transferring of power. On the other hand, EIM does not offer any ancillary services in that market. As of right now, LEDWP is actively participating in EDAM stakeholder process to further understand and identify the benefits to our customers. With that, I'd like to pass this presentation to Pijoy to share the forthcoming activities that is ahead of us in exploring the EDAM.
Thank you, Faranak. So what are the next steps? As we mentioned, the EDAM is still under development. So LEDWP will continue to engage the ISO and other stakeholders so that we can continue to, one, develop EDAM, but also to be able to create a working design criteria. The current EIM project management group will continue to support this EDAM evaluation efforts. So what do we need to do in this value proposition evaluation? First, we need to continue to assess the cost as well as the benefits, be able to identify any changes that may come about in our current processes with the development of EDAM, and also to identify any additional staffing needs to be able to prepare for this should EDAM come to fruition. Once that evaluation is complete, then we will go back to the board to present our findings and also any recommendation we may have at that time. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from board members?
Will EDAM be regulated by FERC? And does this, do we anticipate that this will create any new periodic auditing obligations for us in terms of our transmission or power production capacity?
Just like any market, FERC regulates the transmission of electricity. And to answer your second question, whether it's a FERC audit, the ISO as the administrator of this market audits each participant, not just like what Faranak mentioned, not only for their resource adequacy, but also in how they conduct business within this electricity market.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
One brief addition. We saw some significant benefits to DWP in this, but there are some difficult to measure benefits in that doing this helps DWP get greater awareness of market issues throughout the West. And EDAM is the next step. The savings won't be as big, but it will also expand awareness of market issues more broadly and for the day ahead. So it is adding to awareness of the market situation, which can change rapidly in this business. So it has secondary benefits that are big but difficult to measure.
Appreciate that. Questions, comments?
I just want to...
We will come back to the board with an update as the stakeholders' process progresses.
I wanted to thank you for a really very thorough and interesting presentation for some of us who, you know, just catching up with some of your activities. It's really fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good point. You explained something very complicated, quite simply and clearly. So, well done.
I actually could take notes. Maybe be able to describe it to somebody else. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this presentation a great deal. Thank you. And we look forward for the update. We'll work with power to bring it back at the appropriate time. So, thank you. I was hoping to get through to, well, I have a question. We've got one presentation and then one item to consider. I was hoping to get through those things before taking a break. Is that something we, is that, does that work for the board?
We'll make it work.
Okay. All right. Then if we could have Jay Forre move forward?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So while staff comes up, this presentation was requested by Commissioner Katz. She wanted to get more information about how we do our mainline replacement program and just infrastructure replacement in general. So I'm going to let Mr. Breon Lyndsey.
I thought I saw new people in the room. So it's Breon and his...
Yes, it's Mr. Lindsay and his staff. So I'm going to let him introduce his staff and they can launch into the presentation.
You get all the introductions.
I mentioned nobody's name, so.
Everyone, I'm sorry.
You can present your staff.
We promise to be swift. My name is Breon Lyndsey, Director, Water Distribution Division. And today we have staff here to present on water systems strategic replacement program, infrastructure replacement program. So we have some of our brightest in the organization. I'll let them introduce themselves, but just really quick introductions. Ms. Ahinaman Yohawani, she is the Infrastructure and Resiliency and Technology Manager. We have Mr. Martin Lamb, who is the Central District Manager over Engineering. And we have Mr. Stephen Quah, who is the East Valley District over Engineering. And we're looking forward, we're looking forward to presenting this presentation to you guys. As Mr. Anselma Collins said, this was at the request of Commissioner Katz. And some of you guys have already seen parts of this presentation because you guys have come to briefings, job site safety tours, and some other things that we've had over on foothill where some of you guys have had the opportunity to participate in this. So without further ado, here's Water Distribution Engineering.
Yeah, and if I may, before you begin, thank you very much for following up on this. Just for my fellow commissioners, as a reminder, this was raised during the discussion about power pole replacement and kind of looking for a broader view, including water infrastructure. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsay. Good afternoon, Board President McLean Hill, Vice President, Commissioner Brady. Excuse me, this is my first time.
No, no, no. Welcome to this boardroom. Take a deep breath. You're doing great.
Thank you so much. Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Benjamin, and LEDWP Executive Management. My name is Ahinaman Yohawani, as Mr. Lindsay said, and I am Manager of Infrastructure, Resiliency and Technology in the Water Systems Distribution Division. With me today are Mr. Martin Lamb and Stephen Quah. And we are here this afternoon to present an update on our water systems strategic infrastructure replacement programs. The goal of this presentation is to demonstrate to the board that LEDWP's water system has a well-articulated and systematically implemented infrastructure program. The presentation will also show that our efforts are yielding positive outcomes for our water loss metrics and the overall resiliency of our distribution network. So first, we will introduce our water infrastructure plan. Next, we will focus on our most impactful program, our mainline replacement program. And finally, we will end with a brief overview of our water loss efforts. So I'll draw your attention. So I'll draw your attention to the map on the right of your screen. And this is a map of the city of Los Angeles and our LADWP service area. The service area, the water infrastructure spans the entire city of Los Angeles and covers about 473 square miles. And we have about 7,340 miles of pipe. To provide context, that is almost equivalent to the distance from Los Angeles to Lagos, Nigeria, where I immigrated from. So in addition to pipelines, we have over 700,000 services throughout the city. These water service connections are an important source of revenue to DWP. We have over 2,800 large valves. And these valves are important because they allow us to shut down key portions of the water system during an emergency. Other major components of the water system includes fire hydrants for fire protection, pump stations, regulator stations, and relief stations for pressure, to control pressure, and tanks and reservoirs for storage and treatment facilities for ensuring water quality. So in general, at any given moment, we're doing one of three key activities. We're either expanding our infrastructure by adding new installations, we're performing corrective or preventive maintenance activities, or we're identifying and replacing or renewing components as part of a replacement program. So the water system has a five-year projected $5.6 billion capital improvement plan. And it involves the collaborative efforts of employees across every division in the water system. The Water Systems Asset Management Program is led by the Water Engineering and Technical Services Division and is an important part of this capital improvement plan. The Asset Management Program essentially evaluates all major water system infrastructure components and sets replacement goals to achieve the lowest total cost of ownership. So an important objective of our Asset Management Program is to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible with ratepayer dollars. So we achieve this by following a cost-effective, condition-based, and data-centric approach. So essentially, the way it works is our engineers analyze components' expected lifetimes. And then they gather information from leak records and other operational maintenance histories. And then they validate some of this information with experienced construction, maintenance, and operation staff in the field. And then these component goals, so they set these component goals. And the key here is we're trying to balance replacement costs against acceptable service levels defined in our strategic plan. So our Asset Management Group issues an annual report called the Water Infrastructure Plan. And that summarizes, you know, basically the result of all of these efforts in form of replacement goals and then highlighting specific infrastructure accomplishments. And I'd like to highlight some of those accomplishments on the next slide. I'll begin with 16.8 leaks per 100 miles of pipe annually. This is the leak rate that we achieved in fiscal year 2122. The number of leaks is a key metric for measuring the success of our mainline replacement program. It is one of the most commonly used benchmarks in the industry for assessing the physical condition of a distribution system. This leak rate is almost 33% less than a national average of 25 leaks per 100 miles of pipe per year. Next number, four hours. That's our average leak incident response time that we commit to our customers in our customer bill of rights. In the last three years, we've actually responded to most leaks in less than two and a half hours, 137%. This is the increase in mainline replacement rates starting in 2006, 2007 fiscal year and fiscal year 2021, 2022. And finally, we have saved over $6 million in street damage restoration fees due to coordination of projects with Streets LA, the Bureau of Engineering. So our hard-working Water Distribution and Water Operations Division staff are primarily responsible for executing the infrastructure program and meeting these goals. So what you have on your screen are the five programs that are run or responsible by the Water Distribution Division where I work. And each target replacement rate displayed is a realistic, achievable, and sustainable goal that ensures that specific service levels at the most efficient cost is being met. So for instance, the mainline replacement program goal, which you're going to hear a little bit more in a moment, is 45.5 miles per year, which we hope to achieve by fiscal year 2425. There are incremental goals that are established in intermediary fiscal years, including this current fiscal year, based on resource capabilities and capacity and how fast we can ramp up to that, you know, target goal. And achieving and maintaining this replacement goal is expected to continue driving down the leak rate. That's our goal. That's what we're controlling for. That's what we're measuring for. That's our target. Similar methodologies were used to determine optimal target replacement goals for the rest of the components on the screen. And these goals are closely monitored and constantly reevaluated as part of a continuous improvement process. At this time, I will hand off to Mr. Martin Lamb, who will provide more information about our mainline replacement program.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Martin Lamb. I am the Central District Engineer in our Water Distribution Division. And I'm one of the many responsible for the planning and maintenance of the water distribution system, specifically in the central part of our city. So as mentioned, one of our major infrastructure improvement initiatives in our water system is our mainline replacement program. Our mainline replacement program targets about 93% of our distribution system because that's the number or percentage of mainlines within our distribution network. Just to recap, we have a total of about 7,340 miles of pipeline, of which, again, 93% are considered mainlines. Mainlines being pipelines that are 20 inches in diameter and smaller. And these are the pipelines that deliver water to every home, business, and fire hydrant in our city. Now, our mainline replacement program has multiple objectives, but its core value is to improve our infrastructure reliability by reducing the number of pipe leaks or breaks. By doing so, we help provide a more reliable service to our customers and a more reliable fire protection, ensuring that our firefighters can have the water that they need in order to fight fires and safeguard life and property. Essentially, our distribution system is the fire suppression system of our city. Our program also helps improve resiliency in our system. So in the event of leaks, breaks, we'll have the ability to recover and quickly restore service to our customers, especially to those critical facilities such as hospitals and schools. Overall, we... All of our infrastructure improvement programs have one guiding principle, and that is to help fulfill the mission of our water system, to provide safe, reliable, and cost-effective water to L.A.'s communities, helping to keep our city water strong. Now, how are we achieving this? Our water system has been increasing the number of mainlines that we replace every year. And we're going to continue to do so until we reach our target goal of replacing 45 and a half miles of pipelines every fiscal year. That equates to about 240,000 linear feet of pipe. And we do expect to reach that goal in fiscal year 2425. By doing so, it will help us achieve a pipe life cycle of about 150 years, which is the expected life cycle of our current pipe installations.
Just on that, the percentage of mainline replacement miles relative to the overall mainline that we have, this is quite small.
Yes.
How do you address that? I mean, what's the right amount? You know, we do have this long replacement cycle, and you are going to prioritize it. But it would seem that there is a balance between getting ahead of issues, too. And this doesn't seem like that much, although I know it's costly and a lot.
Absolutely. That's a great question, Commissioner. We have looked into industry best practice. We did look into research that's been done comparing work that's done across different utilities, an average rate of replacement, optimal rate of replacement. We are just under about a percent. An ideal range that you want to be is about 1%. So again, as we continue to ramp up gradually, because again, even though we know the target is 1%, we've looked at the cost of going to that over a period, you know, short period of time. There's going to be burdens to our ratepayers. There's going to be burdens to our system, stressing our system, hiring that amount of people in a short period of time, having them do the work safely. So again, this ramp up gets us to that target at a sustainable rate. And so we are right about the, you know, where we should be. We're progressing forward.
Okay, but aren't we somewhat behind also? I mean, we are ramping up to 1%, which is where we should be. But aren't we somewhat behind?
Actually...
Historically, we haven't been at 1%, right?
No. So in the last 17 years, actually, we've ramped up our rate quite a bit, again, about 137% in about 15 to 17 years. And at this time, in the last fiscal year, previous fiscal years, it's actually exceeded our target goal replacement rate. And in the last fiscal year, we were at 99.9%. So again, we're on track to continue to replace pipe at a sustainable rate. That's the key. And again, one thing to... And we'll talk about this in another slide towards the end. One of the key measures is we look at our overall leak rate. Again, we're at about 16 points, between 16.8, 17, 18 leaks per 100 miles, which is way below where we need to be at this time.
Yeah, and just for context, I mean, I do want to say I'm very impressed with the progress that's been made as a customer that was the recipient of a difficult, what I now know was a trunk line break because it was a 36-inch pipe.
Flooding our garage.
Yeah, so, you know, we had a major flood in 2014. It was the result of a trunk line break. And I remember from the news stories then that we were at the time at a 300-year replacement cycle. So seeing the acceleration to be able to move, you know, and the increase in such a significant percent in the rate at which we are maintaining our infrastructure, I do find very encouraging. So, thank you.
That week being the University of California at Los Angeles. The Commissioner and I don't live together, but... For those who are just watching and have no point of reference, that is the week.
Thank you, yes, at UCLA. I don't know if your color, you know, combination today was intense.
She could be Rams, you know.
No, 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 no.
Water and power, yes. So thank you very much, Commissioner, and that's exactly right.
You know, I had the same question as Commissioner Ahinaman Brady. And I wonder if we got to the answer or if we have one. And, well, maybe that's presumptuous. I might have the same question as you. And it's about our infrastructure deficit. So I think what the Commissioner was getting to is that we're in deficit in terms of our previous lack of investment in existing pipes, not only to get that leak rate down, but also, I mean, we're reaching the end of the service life cycle of a lot of old pipe. And the question is, is this rate, which is sitting at, what, 0.77%, is it fast enough not only to keep up with 150-year life cycle of new infrastructure, but to make up for the deficit in investment over the last 100 years?
I love this. Everybody's on the same course with respect to the kind of, well, what are we benchmarking against? And is that benchmark actually...
Can I say that question till the end?
Yes.
I think it'll be answered.
Yes.
They're going to get here. Is it sufficient to get us where we actually need to be?
I'm always asking questions that are too early today.
Absolutely. And we actually start answering that on the very next slide. That's what I was going to say. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Go ahead.
All right. So every year, we replace pipes in our system strategically by prioritizing pipeline replacements based on a variety of factors. We use factors such as leak history of the pipes, age of pipe, soil conditions, meaning how corrosive the soil is where the pipes are embedded, pressure, direct feedback from our crews to help assess the pipe's potential to experience a leak. This information is then used to create our replacement projects in areas that target most or all of these characteristics. We also do consider other factors, such as pipes that are serving critical facilities or that have the ability to cause major community disruptions, as well as coordination with our public works partners in the city. If you observe the heat map on the right, hand side of your screen or slide, the map does represent the output of our computer model. The darker shades represent areas with a higher potential to experience leaks. And as a result, the majority of our mainline replacements are being conducted in these areas of higher potential. I'd also like to mention that based on our data, about 2/3 of all the leaks that are occurring in our system are actually outside, located outside of disadvantaged communities. So these communities are not being disproportionately impacted by leaks in our system.
Absolutely.
And before you go on, sorry. I just want to be clear. So the critical facilities are actually... The risk to critical facilities is taken into account in this overall rating of pipes and the prioritization so that it's not just what's the oldest pipe. It's what is the risk to our community?
That is exactly right.
The entire water system sharing section sitting there, not even supported.
Yeah, okay, great, absolutely, absolutely. So basically, age is just a number. So just because a pipe is old doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to be replaced. We have some older pipe that's doing fine. And we have some... So again, it's based on this combination of factors. And it is a computer-based model. So we input all of that information, and then the output kind of guides us. And again, we look at the results, and we see that leak rate going down. So we know we're on the right track. We're replacing the right pipe, essentially.
All right. So we do take great pride in implementing this program. We are very fortunate to be one of the few water agencies that has the ability to take our projects from concept to implementation. We do have engineers constantly engaged with our permitting agencies and regulators to ensure that not only we have permits ready for construction, but that we also find synergies anywhere that we can, especially with our public works partners, most notably the Bureau of Street Services and the repaving program, to achieve cost savings for our ratepayers. We also coordinate internally with our Intergovernmental Relations Office, Affairs, and Public Relations Office to promote our projects out to the local council districts, neighborhood councils, and any other community stakeholder or group that might be interested or might be impacted by our projects. I'd also like to mention that our construction crews are true professionals at what they do. They do take great pride in the work. And we can always be certain that they will provide the highest quality of customer service to our customers being impacted by construction by accommodating as much as they can safely can. And we can also be certain that their installations are always conducted to the highest standards of quality. Our safety is one of our core values. And we are also very proud to have a safety program that helps keep our customers, the public, and our employees safe during construction. Now with that, I'd like to hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Stephen Quah, who will speak on some of the resiliency initiatives that our water system is undertaking.
Before you launch in, Stephen, just one question, two slides back around the prioritizing of mainline replacements. One thing that just dawned on me is that the chart around number of leaks per miles doesn't actually take into consideration the volume of water discharged or lost. And is there any way that that can be incorporated? Just as we, you know, while we have great benefit of having water this year, the amount of water we lost and how much was lost at UCLA that one time was just such a catastrophic amount that, you know, prioritizing based on where, you know, not losing volume is also, I think, an important feature.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And we do consider, it does show up in one of the factors that are input into the model. And that's the pipe... We have also include pipe characteristics such as the pipe diameter, pipe material. So those are also factored into the model.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
We also have another slide later on that talks about water loss monitoring and mitigation. So I think that I'll address some of your concerns, too.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Management. My name is Stephen Quah. I'm the District Engineer in the East San Fernando Valley overseeing the mainline replacement program. LADWP consistently strives to look for new innovations to improve our construction best practices and materials. And earthquake resilient pipe is the innovations that we've adopted into our system. Earthquake resilient pipe consists of both steel and earthquake-resistant ductile iron pipe, what we call ERDIP. Now, steel pipes are known for their strength and ability to withstand high pressure. And ERDIP, they are specifically designed and installed to be flexible, to handle potential ground movement. And that's very important in the area that's vulnerable to seismic events such as Los Angeles. And in fact, LADWP is the first utility in the nation to adopt ERDIP. And since we started our earthquake resilient program in June of 2012, we have installed approximately 51.5 and close to 52 miles of earthquake resilient pipe in our network. We incorporated use of ERDIP to continue to improve our system reliability and resiliency. I'd like to share two project examples with you today. The first project is the Recita and Ventura Mainline Replacement Project. As you can see here on the screen, the blue alignment outlines where the pipe is. We replace about a mile long of 90-year-old cast iron pipe with 12-inch and 8-inch ERDIP pipe surrounding critical facilities as shown here. Additionally, this area is also in a NOAA liquid faction zone by the state of California, meaning that in a strong seismic event, there is a potential for the ground to behave fluid-like and lose the subway stability. So having an ERDIP in this environment is very critical for us. And also to ensure that we can provide water to these emergency facilities should there be a strong seismic event or any other emergencies. The second project is the Foothill Trunk Line Earthquake Resilient Pipe Project. The second project is the Foothill Trunk Line Earthquake Resilient Pipe Project. Compared to the last project, this is a very large diameter project. We replace about three mile long of critical trunk line project in the East San Fernando Valley along the Foothills Boulevard. This project consists of both steel and ERDIP. Phase one consists of this one mile long with steel pipe, and phase two was ERDIP. And that is because that stretch has known faults, and that actually experienced rupture. So the use of ERDIP in this stretch will provide our system reliability to serve that. And actually, by, during, at the time of installation, this project was the longest and also the largest diameter ERDIP in the nation. And it was installed entirely by our in-house crew. And we're very proud of our staff's capability from engineering all the way to construction to adapt to these innovations and technology and continue to build out, build out a water strong distribution network. So here's a graph. How are we measuring ourselves? How are we doing compared to utilities, large and small, in the industry? Then allow me to walk us through this graph. As mentioned earlier, the industry benchmark of a water distribution condition is leaks per 100 miles of pipes per year. I'd like to direct your attention to three areas. First, is the bar graph. That demonstrates our mainline replacement progress over the years since we started this program, tracking in fiscal year 2006 and 2007. And by the end of this fiscal year, we are projected to complete 500 miles of mainline replacement. And projecting that out, we're looking at close to 640 miles of replacement by the end of fiscal year '26, '27. So as you can see, our progress continues and, and steady. The second, I'd like to direct your attention to the yellow zigzag solid line. This represents our leak numbers in terms of leaks per 100 miles of pipe per year. As you can see, as we continue to ramp up our replacement program, we, we see the trend of our leak rate going down in the past 15 years. And what is most importantly is that our benchmark is this 25 miles, sorry, 25 leaks per 100 miles of pipe. We are consistently below that, and our goal is continue to use data and, and to strategically replace our mainline so we can maintain our service the most cost-effective manner. And this is not the only thing we're using data and technology to improve our distribution system. I'd like to pass it back to Yawwani to speak on some exciting initiatives.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephen. So up to this point, we've discussed how we use modern design and installation practices to extend our pipe useful lifetimes, how we use data to select the best pipes for replacement, and review the positive results of our strategic approach. So in addition to these asset management best practices, the water system also incorporates innovative leak and pressure management practices and technologies to minimize our operations and maintenance and reduce physical water losses, or what we also call real water losses in our distribution system. So first, the water system has implemented remote pressure monitoring using pressure recorders installed on hydrants such as the one pictured to provide real-time pressure data. And what we use this information to do is to investigate the cause of pressure surges or transients in the system and to monitor and adjust those operational pressures to ensure that we don't stress our pipes. We also work closely with our Water Resources Division colleagues to monitor and control leaks in our system. We are piloting non-invasive leak detection technologies such as real-time acoustic leak detection devices. These devices help to proactively identify leaks occurring underground before they surface. An active leak detection program will help us to identify pipes that have not reached the end of their useful life but might require leak repair. When leaks do occur, our distribution leak crews perform timely incident response, responding to most surfacing leaks in less than three hours. And we have a dedicated emergency response team who provide real-time communication between onsite crews, the media, and general public to communicate the most up-to-date information on outage and repair work. We also have electronic leak reporting, which allows us to achieve 100% reporting of leak events and repair work that's being done by our field crews. So this information, we can now transfer into our geographic information system databases and then be able to use that information for planning and decision-making in the future. We also make efforts to reduce our apparent losses due, due to unauthorized usage, meter usage, and meter under calibration. We have a, you know, meter calibration and smart meter, future smart meter programs that are geared towards these apparent loss reductions. So first of all, we have a calibration program for our 67 supply meters and bench tests, a sample of 1,200 customer meters annually. In the last year, we achieved a 99.6% accuracy rate for last round, last year's round of tests. Smart meters will allow us to track customer-side water losses in real time. So now we're looking towards the future. I'm excited about this. In the last six months, since I got, you know, I've been in this position, I've, we've been looking into this. We've installed close to 800 smart meters in past pilot, smart meter pilots, and we'll be working in concert with the new advanced technology infrastructure division to identify sustainable paths to smart meter rollout across our system. So in closing, the water system invests significant resources in our infrastructure programs, and every day, our employees work hard to maintain, renew, and ensure the longevity of our infrastructure. We are committed to continuous improvement, and we're constantly investing in progressive technology and best practices to mitigate and reduce our water losses. Water is life, and LEDWP is committed to providing safe, clean, reliable drinking water to our Los Angeles communities and the people that we serve. So thank you so much for inviting us to present to you. And at this time, we'd like to take any additional questions or comments.
Okay.
I know, that was very inspiring.
She worms up quite nicely.
I'm gonna start with the Dr. Pickle.
Your presentation talks almost entirely about mainline, not about trunk line. And you note on Slide 6, you're ramping up to 3.5 miles of trunk line. But we know that trunk line has been an area where you've been trying to invest, but has been going very slowly. What has been the history over the last five years of miles of trunk line per year?
That's a great question, and I believe at this time, we've ramped. I don't have that chart in front of me to give you those numbers, but in the past fiscal years, we have gone up from, I think about this time, 2.2. Last fiscal year, we actually achieved the replacement rate. This year, I think we're doing another 2.2, about 2.2, and we continue to ramp up that rate as well.
So that, that's at 515 miles of trunk line, that's like a 200-year replacement cycle?
Yes, at this time. And again, it's important to, to remember that we use a similar approach for our trunk line replacement modeling and project prioritization as well. And what we've seen that, again, age is not the only factor. There, all of these factors are working together to, you know, degrade pipe and make, you know, I guess, what's the right word? Make it an optimal pipe for replacement, make it the, you know, right time to replace it. So it's not just based on age, essentially.
Understood, but thi- this area's been underspent for the last, for about five years, six years since the 2016 rate case? And it's good to see you're ramping up now in this area.
Absolutely.
But I believe there's more staffing to be done and perhaps some mix with contracting, but there's more staffing to be done in this area.
Can I add, add on to Dr. Pickle's comment? So yes, we currently have three main, two trunk line crews that are installing pipeline. We are looking to expand that, but it'd also be a combination of contractor. It will not be 100% done by department personnel. We're actually the only utility in the country that does their own trunk line installation. Everybody else contracts 100% of it out. We actually do quite of it ourselves, but I do believe that the right mix is a combination of staff and contractors as well. But that's a great point that you made. There's two things I wanted to add just for the board, because Commissioner Newman Brady asked about quantifying water. When we, we've had, we conduct leak, water loss audits. We're required to do so. Our water loss in the city of L.A. is around 6%. So just to let you know, that's about the lowest in the entire country. So yes, when we do have certain leaks, they're quite grand and fantastic, like the UCLA break. But for the most part, the amount of water that we lose, whether it's from leaks or water theft or anything like that, is around 6%. So it's quite low compared to the industry standards.
Yeah, I was also interested to learn in talking with your team that a lot of our pipes are very shallow compared to nationally, which has been a, a strong benefit in terms of faster leak detection and less water loss. So that, that was helpful context to have.
Yeah, I think if you look at other parts of the country, especially where it freezes, the tendency is to hide the pipes a little deeper. We don't have that issue here. In, in California, it doesn't typically freeze, at least not in L.A. So consequently, we can benefit from that, that we can hide the pipe basically three and a half feet or so, you know, from the top of the surface, which allows us to be able to identify and to be able to mitigate any leaks a lot faster. Another program that we're working on, I don't think, and Henneman talked about this, but we're looking at a pilot to install some special valves for pressure regulated stations that could allow us to, at certain key locations, lower the pressure in the distribution system at night. A lot of the leaks tend to happen in the middle of the night. And the reason why is because that's when you have your highest pressure. Your demands go down, the water's there, it pressure builds up. So a lot of times you hear like, 2 o'clock in the morning, you have a leak. That is why. So we're looking at that as well to make sure that that's technology that we can implement in selected areas that will allow us to automatically lower the pressure and take some of the stress off the pipes as well.
It's really great points. I thank you, Mr. Collins, for bringing up those points. You did bring up about the shallow pipes in our system. So we're, we're very fortunate to have good weather most of the year. You go to other parts of the country like Alaska, we're part of a Dirty Dozen, which is a water management workshop.
Thank you.
It's called the Dirty Dozen, I'm sorry. And they, they bury their pipes about 20 feet. And so you have certain places in Alaska where, where the pipe is just so deep that it's difficult to identify when there's a leak. And then you have some, some other areas where the temperature is so high, and if they're using plastic pipe, which most of the industry uses, the pipes have a tendency to melt and break. So that's why the pipes are buried a lot lower. We're very fortunate to have different types of materials in our system, whether it be ductile iron, other ERDIP, or steel pipe, that we can bury at a shallower, a shallower surface depth. And it really makes it easier for us when there is some sort of leak or.
Yeah, hopefully cuts repair costs as well, I'm sure.
It does.
A lot less excavation, yeah.
It also helps with the safety of employees. When you have extremely deep pipeline, now you're talking about a much more significant shoring mechanism to ensure that the employees can actually enter into the hole and make the repair. So consequently, for most of our distribution pipe, we can, we do install, install shoring, but now you're talking about being less than five feet deep or so. Once you go deeper than that, you know, you're talking about additional measures that you need to take to ensure the safety. And it's a lot more difficult to do that because you're talking about shoring boxes that need to be placed into the stream.
Um, just, uh, Arm, oh, one second, Arm.
Oh, sorry. Um, just, just a comment. First, I want to thank you. This, this has been great. I appreciate all the, the details that you provided and, and the background. Just on a strategy, I just want to make sure, on, on the infrastructure and the long-term view of what we want to do, this is something that we are building our own crews to make sure that not only we keep up with the backlog, but we also do it. The, the mention of the quality and the care that goes with our crews taking care of our, our infrastructure is something you cannot buy on the market. So I want to make sure.
I was gonna let that comment pass, but thank you.
But I just want to make sure that when, when we come back with, with staffing ramp up that we have, that's the core strategy, that we want to make sure we hire, train, and equip our own employees. I mean, I've, I've, I've dealt with many of them. There's no substitute for having that backbone of the department that actually keeps us safe moving forward. I just want to say it, and because we're gonna bring plans for actually doing it eventually.
And to add to that, you know, that we're unable to attract this high caliber talent.
I love this.
And just showcase further how remarkable our water system is.
Yes.
This is quite extraordinary. Tell Dennis.
Yeah. He's been texting me.
It's been a water day.
I'm wearing green because I'm the landscape architect in the room. So I just wanted to ask, what happens to all the pipes? I mean, we think that get taken away.
That's a, that's a great question. Do you have the answer?
Sure, yes, sure.
Because you're so efficient at removing them, and so where do they go?
Right, Commissioner. So most of our pipes are buried and abandoned in place. So over time and over many years, they'll degrade because most of them are cast iron, so the metal would just degrade over time.
We, we fill, we fill the void that the pipes have. And we, we, most of the time, we abandon in place. There are a few situations where we need to replace, remove the pipe because the corridors, especially in L.A., is so crowded with all the utilities that we may have to remove a portion of it. But that, yes, once again, you have to keep the existing main in service until you're ready to cut over to the new. So you're putting in a brand-new pipe, and at the end, you just connect it up back to the system, connect the services, and you abandon in place. But you do backfill that pipe, that, that you abandon.
I just hope, I was, I was hoping.
Architectural feature.
That the steel's used for other things. I'm sorry, just was hoping for an answer like that, but it's okay.
Are there, are there questions or comments regarding this presentation?
Not at this time.
Terrific. Um, I, you all have been, you know, duly complimented and uplifted, and you have been really, this has been a great presentation, and it's good to see all three of you and to see what our young engineers and department employees, you know, look like when they come forward. And you all are fantastic, so thank you. Also, I just, you know, want to note, having just returned from vacation, not on the island of Maui, but on the island of Kauai, that it's very clear to me why there's so much pride and enthusiasm associated with, you know, things like, you know, digging pipes and thinking through, you know, forward planning, et cetera. Because it was, you know, just quite extraordinary as we continued to get the news to appreciate the extent to which there was a catastrophic failure of infrastructure. And, you know, again, there's so many things, and most of what you all do and the employees out in the field that are doing that incredibly difficult manual labor do, goes unnoticed. And yet, it is the backbone of what keeps us safe. You know, and so it's just, in thinking about our countrymen who are struggling to recover from that catastrophe, I just am even more appreciative of and more interested in highlighting the incredible amount of continuous work and thought and planning that is required to make sure that in the time of crises, the fire hydrants do work, that, you know, we do have the capacity to meet the challenge. And so for that, you know, and for everything else that you do, thank you. And, and if you could only have seen the faces of your supervisors behind you as she were presenting, you would have been quite gratified. They were pulling for you every step of the way. And for the three of you newbies, we appreciate your being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have two remaining, well, a couple of remaining items. One, quickly, I skipped over the note with respect to neighborhood council community impact statements. Item G, is there anything there that we need to be mindful of?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed by any neighborhood councils on any of the items on today's agenda.
Perfect, thank you. We have item K1, which is the, well, we have filed items, J1 through 4. Are there any questions or comments concerning any of the filed items? All right. We have approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the July 25th meeting.
I'll second. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Katz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lear.
Aye.
President McLean Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw. Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Then the remaining item on the agenda is item L14, and is there a motion to approve? Or do we need a presentation on L14?
I think we have a couple. We have five.
Others were deferred. Five and 12 are deferred.
Deferred, that's right, thank you.
I'll put forward a motion to approve. Do we need to make the modifications?
Yeah, once we have a motion on the table, then we can, then we can amend it. So I will second that, and then with respect to item, well, actually, with respect to item 14, Julie, tell me if I'm correct, can the staff simply agree that it will incorporate the, the recommendations from the ratepayer advocate, or do we have to formally?
Your motion, your motion should be moving to adopt the motion with the modifications proposed.
Okay, okay. Should I redo my motion? Okay. Motion to approve item 14 with the recommendations of the Office of Public Accountability Incorporated regarding reporting.
Okay, and I'll second that. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific.
May I make one request?
Yes.
Just, should the executive order be, I don't, I don't think it would be revoked, but like tabled or stayed, can we be notified just of any changes related to this, our policy? I know we would proactively need to do something, but.
The way that that would typically work is that, again, if we have a policy that if the executive order is impacting our policy, then I would have council provide us with notice, and then the board would be in a position to take action or not.
Okay, so then.
All right.
Understood.
Thank you. So if we could prepare to move into closed session, Julie, I know you have a whole, you have the, the magic words that take us there. It is 12.
No, one.
I'm sorry, one, we're still thinking, 110. If we could move into closed session at 1, if we could break for 20 minutes and commence closed session at 1:30, does that work?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right.
And will we be here or?
We can, it's a very small closed session. We can move into our conference room.
Okay, great, thank you.
Board shall recess into closed session. After the closed session, the board will publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or extension thereon of every member present in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54957.1.
Thank you. Then we are currently recessed.